Good, alright. Good evening. Excuse me, today is Thursday, September 7th at 6:30 PM. This is the Allentangie Local Schools Board of Education's regular meeting. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Jenkins, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Dr. Wise?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Well now, approve the agenda so we could have a motion to approve the agenda as written, please, with no amendments.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, with a motion and a second. Mr. Jenkins, any discussion on the agenda? No? Okay, please call the roll, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Alright, we'll go to the Board of Presidents' report. So tonight, we've got three presentations. The first is a redistricting update, which will be, I'm sure, very interesting. And then we have the annual staffing presentation, which is always a good update on how we're doing staffing-wise. And then the annual transportation presentation about busing and the state of the buses. So, state of transportation. So, good, good information tonight. Any updates from the other board members?
We had the Facilities Committee last night. There's good progress being made on Elementary 17. Everything's going smoothly, which is great. We continue to discuss, you know, some of the numbers that are, they're coming up around student enrollment and planning for the future in that regard. That's going to be obviously part of the discussion tonight and continuing discussion as we move forward, as well as, you know, just thinking about how that's going to impact our financial future, you know, moving there. So continuing discussions in that, in that respect. And yeah, we'll, we'll see what the presentation looks like tonight.
So it's redistricted tonight, but then the enrollment update in October? Is that right?
There's the facilities enrollment.
The plan is October, the first meeting in October.
Right, but some data is being shared tonight also.
Mental health meeting next week?
And mental health meeting is next week.
Oh, good, okay, perfect.
That's it, mental health meeting next week.
Libby, Keisha?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good, let's roll right into our first presentation. This is a redistricting update for Elementary 17. Mr. Randy Wright, our Chief of Administrative Services, and Mrs. Karen Jackson from Woolport. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having us. First, I'm a little curious why, why you're thinking it's going to be very interesting.
Redistricting is always interesting.
No.
A little bit of the, that's involved. But, tonight is kind of a special night. First, I want to share just updates on the committee work. Our committee has met twice since Mrs. Davis and I spoke to you, and the group has continued to look at the central to north-central area of the district, identifying planning units that would be potential moves to Elementary 17. So they have met in various groups. They have played with different boundary scenarios to start to get a feeling for what decisions would be for enrollment, not only at Elementary 17, what would be left and available for growth at Cheshire, looking closely at Arrowhead for the foreseeable future, making sure that we're still okay at Shale Meadows and at Heritage. So we're kind of in that corridor right now. And then there's a long, a little bit of a long-term idea, thinking about where we would be with Johnny K. Corner. So as we get closer and we develop plans, it could impact pretty much that northeast, from north-central to northeast area. So, but as we continue to meet, we'll provide another update. And then, the more important part of tonight is taking a look, and Karen will walk through a presentation for you. And what we know over the years is that the information presented tonight is a, more of a projection and more of a prediction for long-term student potential. And this information informs our work in redistricting, our leadership team, and understanding how trends are coming up with buildings specific. So this, this begins to present that information. What Karen will present tonight is very, very long-term and a little more higher level, and she'll talk about the methodology that goes into it. And then that will inform the Facility Committee's work and Sharon's work, which will be more of a 10-year projection that typically is a lot closer based on variety of factors. And then, what we do is we take it and our experience then applies what we might as well call the art of redistricting, because it goes beyond just the numbers. We need to understand how transportation is going to be impacted or decisions we make impact transportation's efficiency. We have to think about how students are best served with programming, with pupil services, and we need to adjust for a lot of those things that we bring from all of our varied experiences. So, we get a lot of information that helps inform that. Information that Karen is prepared to share informs our redistricting committee and our leadership team. And then, it also helps prepare and in some ways validate the work of the Facilities Committee. So, I just want to give a quick overview of how that all works together. And then, I'm going to let Karen lead you through her presentation, but I'll be available for any questions.
And this is, sorry, and this is consistent with how we've, we've approached this kind of growth challenge in the past?
To my knowledge, for approximately the last 20 years. Very similar, and again, I think it's, it's been enhanced more recently through this combined work. And it's not checks and balances, but it's checks and validation, if you will. And, and so, this has been very good. And then when we see the consistency, we know that we can apply the art of it a little more realistically.
Triangulate around an answer, right? Couple data points and some input. And then if you would, before you said Woolport, that's kind of a new name to us, but not really a new firm. So if you wouldn't mind a little bit about the firm before you start though.
Sure. So we, Cooperative Strategies was purchased by Woolport about a month ago. And they are an engineering, architecture, and geospatial firm. They do a lot of work in this area. They're actually headquartered in Dayton. So it's a much bigger company, but we have a lot more resources now, and it's really exciting for us. Our team will still stay in the K-12 factor, so I'm not going anywhere. I'll still be your, your contact for housing and redistricting and things like that. But it is pretty exciting for us. We have a lot more resources and they're doing some really awesome stuff with mapping and things like that. So hopefully we can tap into that soon.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Alright, so as Randy mentioned, my name is Karen Jackson. I work on the housing study as well as redistricting. Just to piggyback off what he said, our redistricting group is an awesome, awesome group. We have such a great time every, every time we meet. They are just the best. So kudos to them for giving up their evenings to come work with us on this important work. Moving on to the housing study, so as Randy mentioned, it, these, this is used to inform and confirm the Facilities Committee projections. We also use it in redistricting, and I can kind of show you how, how it applies later on. The housing study really just measures the impact that housing has on student enrollment. And very simply, it's based on student yields, which is just number of kids divided by number of housing units. So on my example street right here, we have five students, 10 homes. That's a yield of .5 students per unit. So we do take this one step further and look at student yields based on the age of home. And as you can see from the chart on the right, it is a very clear trend of first increasing enrollment, then we get to a peak of, at around 12 to 13 years old. And then as that home ages, we see declining enrollment. If you look at the colorful chart on the left, this informs our yield model. So this is showing the student yield, so student, I don't know why it does that. Students per housing unit based on both age of home and assessed value of home. Anything in red is going to be relatively higher yield, mostly over one, it looks like. And anything like the greens are going to be lower. If you look at the column on the far right, that's the totals, that really shows what our yield model will be. So that is the yield based on the age of home. And then, as I mentioned, the yield model is based on that. You can see a very, very clear trend in that case.
Can I just ask a question about that? So, you know, I, I'm just curious because I, that makes sense to me instinctively, but then I think about some neighborhoods like my own, where people, you know, had their kids, then they moved out, and then a new crop of families moved in. Are there, I'm assuming this is just sort of on the average what we're seeing? But are there some areas where we see, you know, maybe like a double dip or something like that that might happen because of, you know, how those neighborhoods are positioned?
So it's interesting. We, overall, we're really not. If you look at like the tail end of the yield model, I'm just going to go over there and point it out. If you look like over here, we see a little bump.
Yeah.
Literally.
In like year 19, we see a little bit of a bump, but it's not as significant as we'd think.
Okay.
So what this tells me is you're still yielding students. When we get out to year 20, year 30, year 35, it's just not nearly as many, and it's not as volatile as it was when the homeless first built.
Mr. O'Brien, can we ask questions when she's on a specific slide? It's so we don't wait till the end and say, back 14 slides ago, is that okay?
Whatever you ready to ask questions for.
Doesn't bother me.
He just did.
I don't carry the title, so I...
It'll be more interactive that way.
So just a quick question on your categories of housing. Do you disaggregate apartments at all by size?
We have looked at it. What we usually see, I mean, obviously, we're not, we're not seeing as many kids out of one-bedroom apartments, more out of two, and then even more out of three. But we stay relatively flat at about .18 students per unit if we look at the whole. And that doesn't really change from year to year. Even when we added, last year, we probably added a couple hundred apartment units in the district. We're still staying relatively flat at .18 students per unit. Now, there's more kids coming out of those because there's more, more kids, more units. It's still .18 students per unit. But overall, there's usually a pretty, like, standard mix within an apartment complex of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and things like that.
That's what I was going to ask. So if, if there was something coming online that was more heavy towards larger units, we'd expect a bigger yield?
Yes, we would. And we could, we could look at that on the side. But in this study, we just show apartments as like one unit. We do break the condos down a little bit more, though I think that's on my next slide.
Sorry, one additional question on this. This data is all Allentangie data?
It is.
So, I, I'm just curious also because we do have a lot of, you know, this is an area that's turning over a lot, right? I mean, there's a lot of areas where it's farmland just turning into new subdivisions. And some of the older homes, you know, more spread out, you know, not in the very tightly-packed subdivisions. I'm curious if this same model holds true, you know, like my, my division, for example, like we have one of the older homes in the district, and our house is about 20 years old. A lot of it is a lot newer stuff, and they're continuing to build even now. So I'm just curious if this same sort of trend holds true when you compare it to subdivisions that are like the ones that have popped up that are less than 20 years old throughout the district, if that makes sense?
So, no, but the reason I say that is because the vast majority of them are already beyond our yield model. They're already older than 35 years old. So they're, the yields are a lot less volatile. The, like, the rural residential homes are included in this, but many of them fall beyond that 35-year mark. And we really don't see, once we get past 35 years, we really don't see the yields fluctuating as much as they do in the first 35 years.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, like, say you went to a city that was like Allentangie somewhere else in another state, you know, that 10 years ago or 20 years ago that had the same sort of growth with the same sort of subdivisions, are you continuing to see that same sort of thing in those areas that we could sort of project for our future?
That's hard because there, there aren't many districts like yours. Like, I work in a lot of the Licking County areas too, doing this work, and I have a slide that shows your, a comparison. Their yields are not nearly as high. And for many of, even like the rural residential areas, it is a lot lower, even out there.
Thanks.
Alright. So, as I mentioned, we do look at all housing types within the district. The map on the left, this shows all of your subdivisions and complexes. What it doesn't show is those rural residential houses. So, anything in green is going to be single-family. Anything in the pink colors are going to be some level of multifamily, whether that's apartments, condos, duplexes, et cetera. In looking at your yields, and so just something I need to note really quick is we actually will not receive your 23-24 data until tomorrow. So this study is based on 22-23 data compared to 23-24 housing. So the yields on here are based on 22-23 students. Once we get that data, we'll get the report updated, and we can get you a copy of that. But looking at this, we see an apartment yield of .18 students per unit. Detached condos were at .32, it's a little bit higher. Attached condos is .14 students per unit. Duplexes, we see .47, but that is a pretty low sample size for duplexes. And then we also have luxury condominiums that are detached in the district. Those yield very low students. So we kind of, we separate those out because you do have a couple of developments that are those luxury condos, and we don't want to apply a .14 yield to it when it's actually yielding .07. Your mobile home park is yielding .46 students per unit. Overall, at the single-family level, we're showing .78 students per unit. That's pretty high in comparison to the area. And then townhomes are fairly low at .13 students per unit. So overall, you are yielding .56 or about one student per every two homes or two housing units within the district.
Karen?
Yeah.
Does the 24,056 subdivided single families, that auditor's data, where do you get the number of single-family homes from?
So, every single year, we update your subdivision file. And what we do within that is the, the Delaware County GIS or Engineering Department sends us address point data, and that's where we get those housing units from. So we, we pretty much have our computers count the number of housing units within each of our subdivision polygons on that map. And that's how we calculate that. So this is the same information, just broken down by boundary. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time looking at this, but you can see that, looking at single-family yields by boundary, it does differ based on where we are in the district. A lot of that has to do with the age of home as well. So we also look at all of your housing developments, which, woo wee, you, you got quite a few going on. So this, in our report, we do have these listed one by one, but for the purposes of tonight, we've kind of rolled them up. So, looking at apartments, we have 4,712 units expected to be developed probably over the next 10, or next five to 15 years, which will yield about, goodness, 855 kids, K through 12. Condos, we have 707 units expected to be built. We're looking at 115 kids coming from those. Those luxury detached condos, again, we don't see a very high yield from those, so we're looking at five. Single-family, as I showed you before, that yield model, we have two different values for this. The maximum enrollment for the single-family homes, so 7,000 some, single-family homes, we're showing almost 9,000 kids. That will not occur all at once. That is, that is assuming that all 7,091 houses are, are built and occupied at the same exact time and are yielding that maximum yield at the same time. That will not happen. Our mature yield is when those homes have reached, have gone through our yield model and matured. So we're looking at 2,716, 35 years out. Townhomes, we're looking at 15 kids coming from those 120 units. So in total, again, this will not happen overnight. This will not happen all at once. It's over the next 10 to 15 years. We're looking at 6,816 kids. And that is applying a static yield to it, which does not, does not factor in our yield model, which shows by the age of home what it's going to yield. Now, when we put this into our report, we are basing that on developer timelines. So we are releasing houses into the model from those exact developments based on where, when the developer, the municipality tells us when that's going to happen. Some, a word of warning, developers are oftentimes optimistic about how quickly homes are going to be built. So if there is a case where we feel that they're just being too optimistic about a timeline, we will kind of taper that back.
So just, so I understand the 6,816. Is that, how does that compare to the 23,000 students we have today?
In what sense?
Well, what's the 6,816 then, maximum enrollment?
It's not necessarily the maximum. That's just a number, if we apply a static yield to all of our homes.
That's additional students, so you're saying, beyond what we have today?
Yes, but they're going to come in waves.
Right.
Yeah, they're not all going to come at once, they're going to...
So 23 could become 30,000 if we have 6,800 additional students? I don't...
Over 10 to 15 years, you'd have 6,800 graduating.
At some point, it could. But those homes are going to be released into the, or going to be occupied at different rates and different, at different times. So, it's not going to happen all at once. Some of those homes are going to be on the other side of the yield model where they're like starting to decline in yield, while other homes are going to be increasing.
So that accounts for that, dropping off and adding? I guess I'm following on Mr...
Not really. It's based on an average of the maximum and mature yield. So about, what, the average, 9,000 and 3,000? So like about 6,000 kids coming from single-family homes. And I, I can show you this on a timeline, and it makes much more sense. I probably shouldn't have included that total because it's a little bit confusing.
Exactly, I can't, I can't determine if you're telling us we're going to get bigger or smaller.
Oh, you're, you're going to get bigger. Definitely bigger.
So I'm trying to understand, what is, it's 6,800 additional students?
There's a slide worth coming, that'll show this a little bit.
Yes, yeah, and it shows it based on a timeline. So with our study, we also look at building out the district. So what would, what would the district look like if that, if your vacant land, that's currently vacant today, has nothing proposed to be developed on it, what it looks like when, as that starts to be developed as well? The map on the left here just shows your land use within the district. Anything in green is already zoned residential. That's a lot of green. Anything in red is showing commercial, goodness, and anything in that like tannish color is showing agriculture. Oftentimes, what we see in, in terms of land use is that if it's already zoned residential, it's going to be forced to go in terms of development. If it is zoned agriculture right now, that is next most likely to go. We often, we don't really see commercial or industrial or exempt land turning into residential.
Before you move on, you're looking at students for this build-out. Do you have any, does, does any of your modeling look at valuation, the potential valuation that could come from this build-out?
They do not. We could probably apply like a pretty standard valuation from it, from what you've seen in like the last couple of years with your developments, but no, we don't, we don't look at the, at what could potentially come in terms of tax dollars for you.
Financial models do, though.
Okay.
So, I would have, where you're seeing on the right, I would have an estimate for what we think is brand-new residential every year. And it's about, right now, 95 million in assessed value. But if that doesn't jibe, that's because assessed value is 35% of its market value. So take that number and divide roughly by a third. So three, three times that number is the market value that's coming online every year, somewhere in the neighborhood of 280 to 300 million.
And that's based on the zoning, but the zoning could switch, right? Like if it's agricultural now, it could switch.
And we're making that assumption in some of these lots. If you look at the chart on the right, any lot that we're showing in blue is already zoned residential and adjacent to sewer, which is highly desirable for developers. It's, it's pretty expensive infrastructure to put in. Anything in yellow is like future development. It's not currently next, adjacent to any sewer or water systems.
So when, I know you're going to show us the timeline. When does your, not what year, but at what percentage do you, are you thinking this is like, when you get to X percent, your growth has peaked? I'm talking about build-out. When you reach X percent of build-out, you, you're, because not everything's going to be built out.
That's a good question. So you're about 78% built-out right now.
Okay.
Once we finish, or we, I'm not part of that, but once all the developments finish that are currently on the docket today, assuming nothing else comes online, in that time, you'd be 87% built-out. I would say probably about 95% is when you start seeing more, so much decline that you are not able to re, like, fill it back again with some of that, with some of that new development, just because there's not land available to do so.
Just to be clear, when you're saying 78% built-out, is that that meaning built-out based on the stuff that, the resident, the stuff that's zoned residential and has not been developed, or stuff that's zoned residential and has not been developed, and the agricultural that could be eventually zoned residential?
A little bit of both. So it's assuming, so residential, yes. Agriculture, we did, we didn't take in every single agriculture parcel because some of them are, like, have drainage issues, flood plains and things like that. Those lots are never going to develop. So we space, we pay a lot of attention to that as well. So it's like, it's a combination of both. There are some lots that just will not develop because they're, the topography doesn't work.
So basically, 78% of what reasonably could be developed?
Yes, yeah, exactly, exactly. And that like takes into account exempt land too. Like, we're not going to start releasing land, or land for development on your school lots and things like that.
But if it's yellow here, you're assuming it's developable and will be at some point?
I'm assuming it's not developable today, but it could be at some point.
Is it an easier way to ask, does it go into the model?
It does go into the model, just later on.
Yes.
It's more of like 20 or 30, or 20 or 25 years out is when we start releasing that. We release all of the other land into the model first. That's already zoned residential, and it's adjacent to that infrastructure.
But what I think I hear is, is there's other land that would be on that map on the right, but you didn't go ahead and take the time to color-code it because it's undesirable.
Exactly, exactly. Undesirable, unbuildable, it's, it's more than likely not going to happen.
How, how, how good are you? Like how, how sure? Within what range are you? You know what I'm saying? Like, because you can look back and say, 10 years ago, we said this, right?
It's hard because it changes. That's why we do, we update this pretty regularly because things, things do change. A couple years ago, we were, we were showing higher densities in our student potential, so we were releasing more units per acre. We have since scaled back based on some of those developments that have, that have been more recent, assuming that more developments, like, within the last couple of years are going to be what you get moving forward.
So it's, it's obvious the farther out you get, the less you know, and...
Exactly, exactly.
Well, if it's going to be driven by housing trends, right? We went through a cycle, '08, '09, single-family housing kind of way down, and then apartments went way up, or higher-density developments went up. Now the apartments are kind of slowing down, and you're going back to bigger lots with less density.
Yeah, so you led me into the, that was a perfect lead into this. The charts on this slide show the number of single-family homes built per year over the last 30 or so years. So if we look at like 1999 to 2005, you guys were flying. Like, 1,500 units a year, 1250 units a year, there were a ton, there was just a ton of development going on. Then the housing bust happened, and you can really see you took a hit. 2008, two years, or three years after you were almost at 1250 units built per year, you were down to 312. You have since bounced back, but you are not nearly at the level you were at one point. So the last two years, we've seen 500 units built and 600 units built. We are expecting that to continue to increase year after year, but you're not, you're certainly not back to those levels, early 2000 levels. And then the map on this slide just shows the parcel, or the year built based on parcel. So anything in a darker red is going to be more recently built. Anything in like a yellow is going to be a little bit further out in the past. So we do actually have four different models in our report, but I'm going to share the 700 units per year model. 700 units per year is related to the vacant developable land. As I said before, we do look at those developer timelines, the municipal timelines for developments, and that is what we are showing for your housing developments that are currently proposed or planned. If you look at this, the bottom layer that dark... If you look at this, the bottom, uh, layer that dark green, does this work? Oh, yeah, it does.
Yeah, the laser only shows on the front screen.
Ah-ha, okay. So that dark green up there, that shows your existing single-family. So all of your existing single-family homes, when they run through our model based on the age that they currently are, we're showing decline, okay? We've shown that for years and years and years. If you look at this yellow section, that's gonna be your existing non-subdivided single-family. Um, as I said before, the vast majority of those homes are gonna be over thirty-five anyway, and so we would apply a mature yield to those. Your multifamily is right here in this pink. Um, you can't really see the purple, but this whole pinkish section is showing your multifamily, including condos, apartments, um, and then mobile homes. If you take a look at this light green, this is where we start showing your current developments. So this is your developing single-family units. And you can see this is where your growth is coming from. If none of these occurred, you would be in a declining enrollment phase. But because you have so many developments going on, we're showing increase. The pink right here, again, these are based on developer timelines for the, uh, multifamily. This is showing your, um, multifamily under-development right now. And then we have two different models, or two different sections that show your vacant land. The darker blue is going to be the high-potential vacant land, those, those parcels that are either already developed or owned, um, that are adjacent to sewer and they're zoned residential. The other vacant land, this is gonna be the further out, um, land that we are expecting to develop at some point, just not in the near future. So you can see, the top section is going to be our build-out study. The pink and below is what is occurring and it is already on the books. That is what has been approved by your municipalities to move forward. So pink and below is realistic. Up at the top, I'm not saying it's not realistic, but it is the build-out study. So if no land were to be purchased and developed beyond what's already been approved today, that top blue section can be ignored. Um, and as I said before, the seven hundred units per year is only referring to that vacant land piece.
So the, the decline in green, in the existing single-family, from like peak to run rate, what's the yield change?
I think you're, hold on, I can tell you. Um, you're about one point two-five or one point three at your peak. And then if we go down, you're about point four-five students per unit, um, once you hit maturity. So there is, there is a very big difference in what we see.
And what would stop that from happening?
More turnover.
Environmental factors would stop the decline in existing single-family?
I would say every single home, as soon as they graduate their last child, is moving out and a new family is moving in to replace them. Um, but the decline tells me that that is not occurring across the board. It's certainly occurring in some places. We're not showing a yield of zero after, um, after the home has its like one or two kids and that you graduate them. Um, you're still yielding kids, it's just not to the extent that they were before. People are generally staying in their homes, um, at some level. So I mentioned, I do this work in a lot of central Ohio districts. So i- it's always fun to look at how you compare to the rest, or to your neighbors. Um, the yield model at the bottom, you guys are going to be in that light blue, the thickest line. Um, and that is your yield model compared to others. If you look at the purple line right here, that's, oh, that doesn't work, huh? This is Pickerington. Um, they have pretty high yields the first couple of years, um, more so than a lot of districts in the area. That top blue line, that's gonna be Granville. Um, Granville has very high, very steep yields, um, and then it's a lot bigger decline moving down. If you look at the chart at the top right, this is showing your static yield, so total number of kids divided by total number of housing units by category. If you look at single-family, overall, if we were to take every home and every kid that lives in single-family, that's point seven eight students per unit. If you look down the line, you are, you are number one. Um, you have the highest yield across the board in all the districts that I've worked in. Um, something to keep in mind with this is I did use twenty-two, twenty-three student data and compared that to twenty-three, twenty-four housing data, so that is artificially low. So that point seven eight, you're still higher than the rest of the districts. That's, that's only going to grow when we get those, um, updated students.
So these are the districts you've worked with in central Ohio?
Yes.
So you don't, do you have data for like Marysville, Big Walnut?
Marysville I do, but it's, it's outdated. Um, I haven't worked with them in a couple of years. I have not worked with Big Walnut before.
I'm just curious what it looks like, 'cause I, I think, isn't Union County's growth similar? I, I'm just trying to, 'cause I'm thinking like Heath, they may not compare as well as, to Delaware?
I would say Marysville, they're, they're not, they're not growing at the same rate that you are. In terms of comparable growth at a smaller scale, Pickerington would be up there. Southwest-looking is getting up there as well. Um, but the scale is still a lot smaller than what you're seeing here.
And then the last district I was curious about is, um, is that Licking Heights that's out towards the Intel stuff?
Mm-hmm. Uh, Licking Heights is just like south of the Intel site. Um, we actually, I will have data for them later on this year, but we just started working with them, so I don't have it quite yet. I would imagine they're close to Southwest-looking though, um, at least on their Licking County side.
So if we go back to the last slide, the, you're basing this on seven hundred units a year to sort of show what the curve would be. And if we went to a thousand units a year or five hundred units, am I correct that the total number that you're forecasting would stay the same, but when we hit the peak is gonna be different?
It does not stay the same. So if we start releasing more units into the model every single year, we're gonna see, we're gonna see a higher, um, overall output. Now, seven hundred is my highest model this year. Um, I base this on the number of houses built historically. Um, I've never, this is actually the highest model that I've produced for you. Um, I think-
Can you say that one more time? This is the highest student yield model you've produced for us?
Yes. Um, so I've never hit seven hundred units a year. And I only did that because the last two years, we, we were at five hundred, then six hundred, so it, it kind of seemed natural. But this is the high end of the models that I produced. Um, I also have a, what, four hundred, five hundred, and six hundred units a year.
Sorry, the units are, but everything, the, so the, the slide before this, we're showing we're hitting five, six hundred in single-family homes. But this is seven hundred units, so all units.
Per year.
Developing, I thought it was seven hundred developing single-family.
It is, it is single-family. So our assumption is that mainly you're gonna get single families. Um, especially on the north side. That's what we're seeing a lot of, except for like Northlake area.
So then, I, I mean, I guess what, what I'm trying to do is conceptualize all this in terms of what our needs are.
Mm-hmm.
As we're going through it, right? And, you know, so we've got a lot of variability in terms of how we're hitting the peak. We know sort of from the data that it's likely to hit that, but I think to your question of what might impact that. So there's a lot of different things happening in Columbus the next couple of years, right? So Intel's coming. And when Intel brings a whole bunch of jobs, all of these houses might become really more va, even more valuable than they are. And you may get some of those retirees who say, the heck with this. You know, I'm gonna get a ton of money because the Intel people want jobs, right? Or any number of other things that are coming to Columbus and the area. So I'm just kind of curious, you know, what, what sorts of things we might be looking at, not necessarily even for this year, but in the next couple of years, that might create a, a peak where we don't otherwise see it? Like, what, what might be unusual about the greater Columbus area that is gonna cause us to have to rethink some of these assumptions, uh, about what, what the regular trends are?
Well, Intel is hard because everybody assumed that the Intel announcement was made and then they would immediately see kids, and that has not been the case. Uh, certainly not. We've, I've seen, I've talked with Delaware County pretty recently, uh, or Delaware City, and they're just working on workforce housing right now. Um, for, there's, there's an addition to Honda in Marysville as well. Um, so they're kind of like in-between looking at things like that. Um, we're not gonna see a lot of kids out of workforce housing. But Intel could certainly play a factor. Um, I would imagine toward like Johnny-Kate corners and Berkshire is where you could see some of that. Um, it's certainly something we'll track, but we just aren't seeing that level of like multifamily or anything like that at the moment. I will say, we, we do this pretty regularly. So if there is a tr, a big change in trends, we would be able to catch it and identify why, and then move forward with assumptions, um, based on that finding.
So just the fifth-grade math model here. Where we're at with students now, the next time we'll be that low is thirty-five some odd years from now. Is the last time we'll see twenty-three thousand. Keep growing for the next-
So this model's, I, I think it goes a hundred years out. Um, so it is a little bit misleading. I, I can't see the number.
I'm just, I'm just looking at like your curve. You've got growth until twenty forty-something?
Yes.
Where we peak at thirty thousand, and then it's twenty fifty-something before we get back to where we are now. So thirty years from now before we get back. So thinking about what our needs are, we're gonna need more for another thirty years before we get back to where we are now.
You could, now, the good news in all of this is, at that time, you, you may have an excess of facilities thirty, forty years from now, but it could be the time that some of these buildings start needing to be retired.
That's what I was thinking as well, they age out.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, I'll put it on my calendar. Say that again.
How's that going for Columbus? You know how hard it is to close a school? A school that's been open for thirty years? But you don't wanna make that. The, the warning sign to the board is, don't build like you're gonna grow forever. You gotta be able to see-
There is an end-
The decline. You need to, you're gonna get to a, a run rate level, a maturity level, and you wanna build to your peak, right? 'Cause then you're gonna have excess capacity for extended period of time.
So then that planning is, but that, so that's more towards the top than at the beginning of where we're at now, right? Like, that's when you-
That's why we do this every year, 'cause you're gonna figure out, where's that curve? Where's the peak? When you tap the brakes, right? And it's, it's hard. But this is, this is really valuable work to do, to have that vision, to have that strategy, to have that understanding of the pattern.
Absolutely. Yeah, you guys are doing all the right things, so.
Well, not just us, but twenty-five years ago, when you were adding twelve hundred students, 'cause you look at the distribution of schools, that, the wisdom of that board long before I even, any, I don't know about you all, but they, they saw this coming and you told them it was coming and they acted on it and the classrooms were ready for students. And the academic excellence we enjoy now is based on what they did back then, 'cause it's better to be in comfortable learning environments.
Absolutely. You guys, you guys just have the perfect caveats into my next slides. So I also got a request, and I don't know who requested it, but I'm so glad it was requested. I love these maps, um, to show student density over the last, um, like, almost twenty years. So in these maps, I did add, every year is showing the schools that existed at that time. Um, so the school points, so you can see most of your schools, not most of them, they're all pretty much south, um, of Arrowhead. That's our, or that's our northernmost school. We also are showing your, the land that you own on all of these maps. Um, in pink, and I apologize about the colors, it's, it's tough to put them on here with all these heat maps. Um, but in pink, you can see we've got like, your B-N-O-R site right here, Bunty Station, Curve Sweeney, and then your Berkshire site as well. So this is where you currently own land as well. So this is two thousand and five, two thousand and six. You can see a lot of your density was in the south part of the district. Six oh seven, oh seven oh eight, you can start seeing Glen Ross a little bit. Oh eight oh nine, nine ten, you can see Cheshire just popped up. Ten eleven, eleven twelve, looks like we got Berkshire that year. Twelve thirteen, thirteen fourteen, fourteen fifteen, fifteen sixteen. Watch that north side, sixteen seventeen, seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one twenty-two, twenty-two twenty-three, and then here we are today. So let me go back and do it a little faster, 'cause I just love these. Thank you to whoever requested these.
That was Mr. Lester.
But thank you, I appreciate it.
It's you.
Six oh seven.
Bad for literature guy.
Aren't these fun? I love them.
It's kind of like the eye doctor, it's like, which one do you have?
And this is where you are today. So something I feel very, that needs to be pointed out, Evans Farm, we aren't seeing a lot of kids yet. That is a huge potential for growth. Um, what's it called, Liberty Grand down in here? You've got a, you've got a school site right there. Liberty Grand is another one that we need to watch, 'cause that, that one has a ton of units, um, for it.
Yeah, can you go back to that slide?
Yeah.
So we talked to Karen, and we did have her drop, I think it's the hot pink in there of our future sites of what we already own in the district. So you can see, obviously, where land will continue to be developed, that we own land, uh, for future schools. So, um, you can see, uh, northwest there, uh, central at the top of the district, and then all the way east, uh, on the Berkshire site.
And this doesn't have seventeen on it yet, right?
Nope, seventeen was-
Right there, yeah. Next year on that. It's right where people are.
So what's, what's this?
That's Berkshire. We own a slab, so, uh-
Are we still?
Yep. We have a slab there.
Say that again, Mr. Meyer.
So that's the Berkshire site. So when they constructed, uh, Berkshire, then we had enough land to add an elementary there in the future, if we needed one there. So that is a, a potential site for an elementary school connected to Berkshire's, sort of like what we have Liberty Tree and Hyatt's.
Yeah.
So that, that's gotta be over a hundred-plus acres still there that's ours?
No, probably thirty.
What's the total acres that we have, still thirty?
Elementary's more like a thirty acres.
I'm just looking at the size of the square compared to what we just bought.
Oh, I don't know if it's proportional.
Oh, now proportional, okay.
So the elementary site, it's less than, probably less than five, the site, the actual building?
And just to piggyback off that, I didn't really talk about it, but if you look up here, this, this is the Northlake, um, developments that are going in. So this is twenty twenty-one, twenty-one twenty-two, twenty-two twenty-three, and twenty-three twenty-four. So that is an area that has kind of exploded, um, as well. They're moving at a faster pace than we had originally expected.
Mr. Meyer, where do they attend now? That-
That's Cheshire.
Okay, Cheshire, thank you.
Any other questions we can answer?
No, it's very good.
I love this.
Looks like bad weather, too.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I have one question.
Dr. Wall?
Yeah, quickly, we just talked about growth and growth and growth, but, um, the Ed Choice scholarships expanded this year. Have we seen a decline in enrollment with the expansion of the voucher program?
Not for this school year, no. We, we've not seen the, the requests or the, um, or the requests of transfer for that.
Thank you.
Any more than we typically would.
And I think, uh- We'll get a final count, but our homeschool applications are down from last year to this year as well. Um, so I'll get a final count on that, but-
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, discussion item number, uh, letter B, sorry, not number B, is the annual staffing presentation, Nancy Fries and Meliandra?
I think we're waiting on our presentation, but good evening, members of the board. No problem. Just riff, just, you know. We do that every day. Trust me, we practiced a little bit today, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. So we are incredibly fortunate and excited to be able to share the work that our team has been doing for the better part of an entire year. So I'm thankful that our new director, Ms. Melanie Andres, is here and willing to stand before me, right? She had the choice and she said yes. She absolutely was willing to do that. So I introduce myself to you as the new chief human resources officer, and I'm thankful that I have the opportunity to speak to you here today. We'd like to frame our presentation here today in a celebratory manner. And we start with quick wins. And so in the spirit of transparency, I don't think the information I'm going to share with you is gonna be new or surprising to you. So we read the news, we look at all of the local and national challenges that we have with teacher shortages. And so that's a real thing. And in our department, we've noticed that. And so when we look at the teacher shortages in the United States, what we're seeing is an unprecedented decline in the number of positions that are being filled. And so this research will tell us that over three hundred thousand teaching positions are not being filled. And that's a national statistic. What we celebrate in Olin TNG is that this year, coupled with previous years, we have a hundred percent of our teachers that are certified, filled, licensed in their area before school even started. We look at some other national statistics. We look at ten percent of the teachers nationally who are not fully credentialed. They could be serving in a substitute capacity. They could be serving in a temporary license. They could be serving in a non-licensed area where there is a need. We celebrate today that in Olin TNG, we have one hundred percent of our certified teachers in their licensed area with no temporary lapse or the need to hire a substitute for our teachers. We're also seeing just a de- We're also seeing just a decrease in the number of students who are entering the field of education. And so, this is where the work gets really, really difficult. And so, I'll be very transparent with you, we work the better part of an entire calendar year, year after year, to recruit our teachers. And so, what we're seeing is, since two thousand nineteen, there are over seventeen thousand less teachers in the state of Ohio.
Can you say that one more time?
Seventeen thousand less students, teachers, excuse me, than we had in two thousand nineteen. And so, we look at that, and those were the COVID pandemic years, and what we're seeing is that, in Olin Tangi, we have hired the highest number of teachers since two thousand and seven, with an unprecedented one hundred and forty-two teachers. On top of that, they're certified, they're licensed, and they're here, present, day one. So, we take an opportunity to say, we call them quick wins, but our team, coupled with the community, would like to celebrate that those teachers standing before our kids on day one were the right teachers, and they were licensed. And so, that comes with a lot of intentional hard work.
Can you stay on this slide for a second?
Sure.
This is what is driving academic success, in my opinion, in our district. It's hard sometimes to put this in context, but education is hurting around the country. Education is hurting when you go all around central Ohio. There are teachers not in classrooms educating kids. We have addressed this because of your hard work, and whoever was running HR before that, your hard work is putting teachers that know their content, know kids, know all this in front of them, so that drives. I'm not trying to pontificate, but I'm saying that it's purposeful, and people wanna work here, and it's a big deal that we're the only school district in the state of Ohio that is on that list. That's a huge deal. And we could talk forever about it, but people wanna work here. How many people are applying for one position?
It depends on the grade level. It used to be in the five hundreds, but we could have anywhere from two fifty to three hundred applying for one single grade level position at the elementary. And depending upon the content level, middle school and high, it's definitely in the hundreds, for sure.
For one position?
For one position.
And some districts can't get one person to apply. That's a big deal.
And also note, wasn't lost on, my colleagues at Olin Tangi was rated higher than all of our employers.
Thank you for sharing that.
That's right, I forgot to mention that.
We're gonna keep that data. So, we, we do want to present this in a celebratory manner. I know that sometimes, you know, there, we're looking under a lens of, what, how much more are we doing, or how much more can we be doing? But coupled with that, I mean, we, we look, use that icon to celebrate something that's incredible. When we look at Forbes, America's Best In-State Employers, we are a three-year champion, which basically means we're, three consecutive years, we have earned that honor. I do have just a little bit to share, because it is worth sharing, that from Forbes, there were eight, eighty thousand US employees across twenty-five industry sectors, and they took a look at working conditions, salary, potential for growth. And we were reported that only a very few, select few were able to earn that distinction, which reinforces our reputation. And what that means is, it's rare to be a champion in that capacity. So, coupled with the fact that we have the people that were hiring that capacity, they're here, and they wanna be here, and they're happy here. And so, we celebrate that, there's only a handful of employers that have ever received that, and we've received that three years in a row. And we move on to what we had previously talked about, our growth positions. So, we also need to look at those positions that we're seeing for resignations and retirements. And what we're seeing is, is good news. We're seeing that we have less resignations than we have in years past. And so, we're seeing a decline in the certified teachers who are leaving the profession. And so, we celebrate that as well, because we look and attribute that to the retention efforts that we have. So, we're seeing less certified and classified individuals leaving their respective positions, and we see about an even or plateau of our administrators. So, we're not seeing a large increase of those resigning, in addition to our retirements. Coupled with all of that, we hired seventy-four teachers for growth positions that equate to an average of four point one six years. And I do wanna take a minute to talk about that, to dispel any of the myths that we only hire individuals with low years of experience. That couldn't be farther from the truth. We have an incredibly comprehensive process that we use, coupled with very extensive research-based assessments, coupled with a very robust interview and screening process to hire the best candidates in each of our respective positions. And that does not just include certified. But what we are happy to report is that, not only were we able to fill those positions, but we did so, I love Mr. Gordon's language, so I'm gonna steal that, on time and under budget. And so, we do that with a master's plus three average, and this year, we're happy to report that we're well below a thousand dollars, one thousand forty-one, in terms of our targeted budget. It's important to notice, and I think it's particularly noteworthy to talk about that just for a brief moment, because we are getting teachers that we pay out at a master's plus ten, which is our maximum offer that we do for our teachers here. And what we're still able to notice is that we're still getting teachers with incredible experience that are coming to the district. So, they're willing to take a master's plus ten pay offering or a salary just to be a part of our district.
So, just so I'm clear, you're making hiring decisions based on who is the best person to put in front of our children, as opposed to, we're only hiring new people because it's, it's, it's cheaper?
Absolutely.
And the context of that also is, new teachers, a zero, is not as effective. It doesn't mean they're not good, it just means they're still learning their craft. So, when you get to four, you start seeing that impact that we want, which is great.
Yeah, we see the value. We have a lot of veteran teachers in the district, too. So, sometimes when our team is working with the hiring managers or the principals, we're saying things like, what is the specific skill set that you're really looking for? So, let's not just say it's the best hire, but we ask them to specifically identify that. We work through that process with them, and we ask those questions back. You tell me why that person is the best candidate, and they articulate that throughout the process.
Yeah, can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Because of years of experience, so no matter if you have twelve years' experience, fifteen years' experience, three years' experience, zero years' experience, you know, one thing I wanna mention is, our staff, when we bring new employees into the district, when we induct them into our culture and how we collaborate and work with and mentor our new staff, no matter what years they have, it, it's just great work and fun to watch our teachers who are here, who work with our new staff that come into the building, all of our buildings, so.
That's key to retention, because teachers leave because they feel like they were alone, in many cases. So, that mentoring is huge.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. This next graphic will show exactly what we just talked about, Dr. Dabaco, that we look at, we have a total average years of a teaching experience at fourteen point five seven. So, this really dispels the myth that we only hire young teachers. If that were true, you'd see a lot more higher numbers on the higher end of the salary schedule, year after year. Eventually, if they're not leaving, and our retention is high, then you would see more heavy, heavy numbers on the upper end of that. And we're well-balanced here, so we're seeing exactly what Mr. Meyer talked about. Younger teachers, working with some of our middle-of-the-road teachers in terms of experience, coupled with our veteran teachers, and that combination and that formula seems to work.
Has that number sort of stayed, I mean, obviously, it's gonna shift, but has it stayed relatively steady over time?
It has. Last year was fourteen point five four, so you're seeing very, very small, not that I memorize those numbers or anything, but you're seeing a relatively, yeah, plateaus, but it's pretty consistent year after year, for as long as Mr. Meyer and I have been here, serving in that capacity. This is one of our favorites, it does demonstrate, you know, sometimes we, we don't necessarily live in a metric world, in the HR world, we deal with people, but these are really good, important numbers, and certainly another celebration for us here today. So, as we look at our new staff employed here today, we have thirty-nine administrators, that does include those administrators that we hired from January forward. We're happy to celebrate, just underneath eighteen percent of those hires came from underrepresented populations. And we, we obtained that number from the EEO form, or the equal opportunity, opportunities form that is required by federal law for any employers that hire more than a hundred employees or greater. This year, it's rare, we usually have a couple of Olin Tangi graduates that have moved into administrator, so this year, we didn't, we didn't meet that metric. But we do have twenty that we promoted from within, which we celebrate. And this is very deliberate and intentional work that the district leadership team has done over the past couple of years. And thank you to the members of the board who have allowed that vertical alignment for, for individuals to position themselves for different positions and to be hired as such. So, that does reach across many different job types, so we celebrate the fact that we're able to recognize the achievement of our individuals and promote them from within. I say a hundred and forty-two teachers, I don't have the exact figures, but with six hundred and thirty-five-plus school districts in the state of Ohio, it was reported that well over four hundred of them only have, on and or about a hundred and fifty teachers. And so, that's what we brought on board, again, certified and licensed in one calendar year. We attribute that to the opening of Berlin, but also to the growth and to the enrollment issues that we continue to present themselves, and we continue to meet that challenge.
How do we, how do, how are we situated as far as pupil to administrator, I might be saying the ratio backwards, as far as other districts in central Ohio? I mean, thirty-nine's like, that sounds like a lot. Some are replacement, I'm guessing.
They are.
But then, does that mean that we're way out, are, do we have more administrators per kid than everybody else?
Well, we have last, we did look at the CUP report, last published in two thousand twenty-two, and so, we have a much higher ratio indicating that we have less administrators per student ratio than comparison districts. I'm really excited about the next, the next celebration, I'll call that. That's almost a one percent increase of our hires from underrepresented populations for our certified staff. And I, I do celebrate this, because this is, there's a lot of intentional work that goes on in our department that is also adopted by our building principals in terms of us already starting the process and the work for hiring teachers next year. That work has begun already, and Mrs. Andres is gonna talk about our intentional efforts that, that go on comprehensively all year. We're already attending job fairs for next year, so we don't get a whole lot of reprieve, we don't get a whole lot of time to breathe, but we do celebrate that that number is, is higher than it has been in years past. So, even with the challenges of the national teacher shortage and the teacher shortages in Ohio, we continue to get results in a positive manner. That is not to say that we can't get better, and I know we, we do say that a lot, but it's truly the motto of our department, that that's an area that we need to continue to focus on. We continue to work with our equity and inclusion teams, and also OEF. We have some great ideas that we're gonna be doing this year, and so, we only hope that that number continues to rise. Super excited to report twenty-four Olin Tangi graduates. You should see them when they come here during orientation. They couldn't be more proud to come back home, and so, that's one of our highest numbers ever, so we're super proud of that. And then, we, just, just underneath fifty percent of our hires are coming from all of our recruitment efforts that Mrs. Andres will talk about, that we intentionally put forth all year to, to actually hire our staff. And then, a classified, we have a hundred and forty-four classified, five point five percent from underrepresented populations, that is down this year. Fifteen Olin Tangi graduates, that's one of our highest ever for a classified. And then, just short of about forty percent come from our recruitment efforts that Mrs. Andres is gonna talk about as well. Staffing totals, it's pretty hard to see, I will give you that. A hundred and seventy administrators, we have sixteen, my eyes are getting a little bit old, Mrs. Andres, you can help me with that. Sixteen thirty-eight certified staff, nine eighteen are classified ESC, two ninety-four, for a total of three thousand twenty overall OSD staff members. And then, this is really exciting, our certified substitutes are up by almost a hundred and fifty. And so, we work really, really hard to increase that pool of candidates. Believe it or not, that's one of the highest needs. When our teachers are out, we need someone to replace them for the day. So, we're seeing an uptick since COVID on those numbers, and we work really, really hard to secure and get those certified teachers, certified substitutes on board, coupled with our classified subs as well. So, we have three hundred, is that sixty-one? Perfect.
Quick question.
Yes.
Can you speak to the two hundred and ninety-four East, Central Ohio, the ESC of Central Ohio? Can we speak to that two hundred and ninety-four, and who they are, what, what positions they're holding within the district?
Absolutely. So, those are a lot of our occupational therapists or speech therapists, a lot of our other support staff in people services department. We do have a couple of administrators that are in that pool of candidate well, as well, but mostly our support staff within the people services department fall in that category, preschool as well. Thank you.
No, thank you.
I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right. So, as I step on the floor, Mrs. Fries just celebrated our new hire class of twenty-three, twenty-four, so I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about how they got here. And she spoke and alluded to that this is intentional, ongoing recruiting efforts that happen all year round. And as she spoke, we're already planning with other departments. We met with people services to plan our intervention specialist interview day this week. We're already planning for orientations next year, and we have an Otterbine Roundtable happening next week. So, all of those continue to be year-round efforts. But some of this recruiting really does start, again, just from our strong brand identity. As we shared, people want to be in Olin Tangi, we are a leader in academic excellence, and so, we have an active pool right now of over three thousand applications, people applying for different positions within the district. That number is also down, so this is a number that we are watching closely, because while we celebrate the achievements of our district and candidates wanting to, to be here, we do have concerns about that number, just given the overall teacher shortage again. And so, that's, that's a statistic that we're going to be watching really closely, in terms of how do we continue to build up that applicant pool so we have the best possible talent recruitment efforts that we can. We did attend twenty-nine outside career fairs, that happens both in and out of state. So, some of the out-of-state career fairs were the University of Kentucky, we went to Michigan, we went to West Virginia this year, again, in an effort to recruit students. Four of those career fairs were HBCU-sponsored career fairs, and so, we make sure to continue to be intentional about reaching out to those different entities that might not be as close by to Olin Tangi. We held our certified interview day, which is an annual event, where over a hundred and seventy-five different certified teaching interviews took place. We had our second annual intervention specialist interview day, and we are holding monthly classified career fairs as well. Throughout the, the last year, we had over three hundred and forty-two classified interviews as a yield from those different days. We continue to advertise on lots of different national platforms, Facebook, Indeed, Instagram, Ohio Means Jobs, LinkedIn, and then, all of our job postings go through School Spring, which used to be monster.com, but it's the school version of that. And so, again, we're trying to reach national entities with those advertising efforts. We also subscribe to an HBCU dashboard, which gives us a direct link to applicants through historically black colleges and universities. So, again, some of our results, eighteen percent of our new hires came from our certified district pool substitutes or daily substitutes hired through the ESC. The celebration there is, these are individuals that we've been able to see in the moment, working with our students, whether it's daily or almost every day, and identified those individuals as people that we want to continue to be in front, in front of our kids. And so, eighteen percent of, of our new hires came from that group. Again, forty-two percent of our new hires came from other recruiting efforts and referrals from different employees throughout the district. Seventeen percent of our new hires, again, were Olin Tangi graduates, so it just speaks to our student experience and how those students want to continue to be part of our community in a professional way, and wanna come back to Olin Tangi to work with us. And then, the last two stats on this slide share just our, our onboarding satisfaction rate. So, we, we do take data to measure, how are we doing with these recruiting efforts? Once people come on board, what is their experience right from the beginning with not only how we interacted at job fairs, but what is their onboarding experience, how does that orientation go, are we setting them up for success so they are truly ready to be in front of kids on day one? day one? And so we have a really strong satisfaction rate with the experience from start to finish before they get to the classroom.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Do we, student teachers, do we know like how many student teachers come into our district and then how many come around, come back to apply?
That's a great question. We did not pull that stat, but I think that's certainly something that we could, we could pull together and report back. We have a lot of, and I don't know if Jack might be able to speak to the number of student teaching placements, but that's another really strong pool. One of the things that we're trying to do is develop some new and different partnerships along the lines of student teaching. So for example, we just had a meeting with Columbus State to try to identify some teaching candidates earlier on in their college planning process. So we can help support them through their transition to a four-year program and then creating some opportunities for those field placements and student teaching with us. So we can kind of follow them from an earlier pathway in their education, being able to have an Olentangie experience with us, and then hopefully be able to bring them onboard in that full-on professional capacity. We're doing the same with OSU. We have an upcoming meeting with them to specifically identify and recruit intervention specialists through that same sort of pathway. So identifying who they are, being able to bring them in for student teaching or field placement experiences, and then hopefully, again, onboarding and hiring. ODE also just announced a new apprenticeship program. And so they're kind of expanding and being more flexible in some of the ways that we could identify people that have other career paths before coming to education to be able to get them maybe licensed quickly or maybe use some of their career experience in lieu of course work. So we could, again, use that kind of new pathway for licensure to identify people that could potentially be onboarded. So we're trying to create some of those new opportunities for expanding our efforts and trying to really identify students earlier on so we can have an Olentangie experience, sort of like our subs, see them in classrooms, be able to kind of get them adept with our instructional practices, and then bring them back as a full hire.
One more question for our teaching academy. Do we know how many of those students come back through and come work with workforce?
I don't. So that's another good number that we could certainly pull and look at. We did not look at that information specifically for this presentation. But again, that's another kind of grow your own program that we really try to utilize that mentorship opportunity. And again, those are, those are our students with their student experience. And so what is their student experience like in our classrooms and how can that translate to their professional career and hopefully bringing them back? I think, again, it speaks to that stat with that 17% of our, of our staff were Olentangie grads. And so that's something, again, to be really proud of and also on our classified side. So as much as we can identify those potential teaching candidates early and bring them back is something that we want to continue to do.
Just along those lines, I'd be curious to know the ones that were hired back, did they all go through the teacher academy? And if they didn't, you know, is there a way to catch them earlier?
Right. Right. Certainly some did, but not all. And so I think, you know, with all the different opportunities we have for kids at the secondary level to kind of explore some of those different mentorship opportunities, what could that look like? And how can we advertise and promote those experiences to get our, our high school students more interested in the field of education earlier and often?
Right. And one of the things we heard from Bridge Ed too is, you know, people sometimes take a circuitous path to get, you know, where they want to be. And some of that's normal. It's just maturing and growing up and stuff like that. But sometimes it's, they're just not aware of the opportunities and it doesn't quite click. And if we can find ways to make that click for people earlier, you know, it's better for them and it's better for us.
For sure.
We've already started that and put that into place mainly because what we have found, I used to teach teacher academy, is that the first time that they may think of that is when they receive their course request selection sheet. And so it's interesting that you brought that up because I already have a meeting scheduled to say, we should be identifying students their freshman year and staying with them and encouraging them and allowing them to be a part of mentor experiences. So quite honestly, the junior year, when you're entering either a teacher academy or mentorship program, sometimes it's too late. And so that's one of our, our work plan goals this year is to partner, offer them free interviews, stay with us, we can mentor they as well. But it's interesting that you brought that up because we need to get started earlier.
Okay, so this next slide speaks to after all of these recruiting efforts, when do we actually start to fill these positions? And so our classified positions are really ongoing. We have openings that continue throughout the school year. And so that's why we do those monthly recruiting events because we are consistently trying to fill those positions all year long. With our certified staffing timeline though, we really start to dive into this in, in January. So this reflects this past school year leading into the start of this August. So in January, we're really looking at the five-year forecast and finalizing what are those full-time positions that are needed? And then we post those anticipated openings. In January, we also hold winter staffing meetings. And so these occur at the building level. Nancy and other members of DLT meet with our hiring managers. Again, that's our term in the HR world for building principals. So we meet with our building principals. We review the number of positions that they will have open. We talk about the interview process and the hiring process. And again, we, we do reinforce, what is that skill set? What are we looking for? It isn't just about new teachers. It's not just about teachers with experience, but we're, we really in a lot of ways mirror our profile of a learner. And we, we're talking to them about the dispositions of, we want teaching candidates that are purposeful, resilient, curious, and kind, just like our students. And so we go through that process to ensure that the, the hiring process is truly robust and that our, our building principals are prepared for that. In February, we're highlighting again our district-wide intervention specialist interview day. This is something we're looking at potentially holding even earlier this year. So again, collaboration with our people services staff is already underway to talk about this process. We were really successful last year. So we had 38 intervention specialist positions. From this day, we hired 21 of those positions. And so it was certainly an effective strategy to do it as early as we did. But there's a balance of doing it a little bit earlier, but not necessarily too soon because we want to know where those positions are landing and how many are truly needed. We also have to make sure that with some of those December grads or anticipated May grads coming out of the college experience, that they are ready and available for, for interviews at that time. So we, we look at a lot of different factors to know what is the right timing, but that was a highly successful event for us this year. In February and March, we start to work on our high school and middle school staffing. This is really a unique experience where we meet with middle school and high school principals along with our HR team to drill down to every single high school and middle school course, period, number of students in each of those sections. We are looking at caseloads and the class size there, but also looking to make sure that none of our staff members are under assigned. So rather than posting a full-time position, we are really trying to maximize and utilize the schedules and capacity of all of our teachers to make sure that we are being able to address student needs and instruction without having to utilize a full-time new position if needed. We're obviously, you know, remaining within the contract for that. But we want to make sure that if we can share resources across buildings or even across levels, we're doing that to leverage capacity of our staff. In April, we are asking for our annual district-wide elementary staff intent form. This process will be especially important this year with the opening of Elementary 17. We know that there will be internal elementary staff moving to that building. And so transfers will probably be needed across other elementary buildings with, within the district. And so we use that process for teachers to have a voice and what, where they would like to teach and what positions they would like to continue to fill. So we try to utilize that process to give them some support and be able to place them in positions that they prefer as much as possible with some of those shifts happening elsewhere. In the spring, all spring, we are continuing to post our external positions across all buildings and departments. And then finally, in June, we're really honing in and finalizing the fine arts schedule at the elementary level, again, trying to maximize travelers and shared staffing across buildings. And so with that, we were able to fill 72% of our positions by June 1st, which is up a considerable amount from last year, and had 90% of our positions filled by July 1st. And again, as you've heard, 100% teachers were ready to go by the start of school. And really, all of this preparation, recruiting, and the early onset of our staffing timeline really allows our, our building principals to focus on students and staff because they're not worried about hiring late in August and they, they know that they're ready to go for the first day of school. So with that brings us again to Elementary 17 and what this process will look like for staffing our new building. So we've already taken action to employ Mrs. Greijack back in May, but she will begin to start to look at positions being posted and conducting interviews and filling those positions come November of this year. So as we look at the internal candidates moving over, we'll then determine how many external positions are needed come January and February. And then we'll start to look at classified positions beginning in the springtime. So that really brings us to the end of our staffing update and, you know, kind of just speaks to that there's a lot to celebrate and we have so much to be proud of and, but we also have some challenges. And so we want to be strategic in our planning and make sure that we are staying focused on bringing in great staff to fulfill our mission for students. But that being said, we want to also thank our entire HR team. So while we're here representing, you know, all of those efforts, they truly deserve the recognition for all the behind-the-scenes work that they do. And they, you know, had a hand in hiring every single staff member that's in front of our kids today. So we want to, we want to really thank them and appreciate them for their efforts as well. So thank you. Any other questions?
Any additional questions?
I used all mine up.
Good. All right. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Our final presentation item is the annual transportation update, Lori Carter Evans. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening. Lori Carter Evans, Director of Transportation. And it is always a pleasure to be here to talk about the Department of Transportation, our wonderful world. And I'm especially proud of the commitment to students that everyone in the department has. The work that we do is so vital to education. So as I, or today, what I'm going to do is talk today about a day on a bus. We'll talk about a typical day that a driver has on a bus. Also want to talk about fleet enhancements, how we develop routes. I want to talk about our recruitment efforts and our memberships and partnerships and some house bills that impact transportation. And then I will wrap up with a few of our projects. So this is a picture of our wonderful union president, Kevin Banjulov.
He's here.
And he's here. Wave at Kevin.
Great name.
So Kevin does a great job with all of our students, but particularly our students who have special needs. But drivers in general, they start their day early. Some of them wake up at 4:30 a.m. to get in here and clock in at 5:30. They do their initial pre-trip inspection. That could include checking under the hood, checking under the bus, checking for all of the safety components of a bus to ensure that the bus is ready to drive. And then they go on and they transport students to high school, middle school, and maybe elementary school. So any combination of those, maybe two schools on their route or all three schools. Of course, we all know what it's like to drive in daily traffic and, and the issues that we encounter while driving. So just imagine those same issues while driving a school bus with students. So checking directions when it, you know, looking to see when it's safe to ensure that all of the stops are made, keeping the time, communicating with the dispatcher when needed. Drivers may have a high school and a middle school route, as I said before, and then about 9:15, that's when they come back in. So they have a lot to look at while they're on the road. And of course, there's bicycles and wobbly bicycles sometimes and pedestrians and joggers. But we also keep in touch with them using a two-way radio. Anytime they need to talk to dispatch or we need to talk to them, we have every bus equipped with a two-way radio. Then they're finishing up at 9:15. Some of them clock out and then some of them stay to do preschool routes, DAC, STEM, ACT, Oasis, anything that is related to our special program schools in the middle of the day. And then we have some, some students who take advanced classes as well, and then we return them back to their buildings. And some drivers, of course, drive field trips. So the rest of the drivers who aren't driving during the midday, they clock in at 2:15 and then they do it all over again. Each driver checks their bus at the end of the day. They are actually checking their bus for students after every student is dropped off to ensure that no student is still on the bus. And then they do a final bus check before they leave. So most of our drivers in their day at approximately 4:45, 5 o'clock, and then some drive athletic trips. So there are some drivers that once they're out on the road and they're doing an athletic trip, they may not come back until seven or a little after seven. So it's a long day. The schedule's not ideal for everyone, but there are parents in the district that would like to have the same schedule as their children, so they drive a bus. We also have people who've retired from other businesses and they come to us and become drivers. And so it does fit for some people. So it's worked for some drivers, like for instance, Kevin. He's been driving for nearly 25 years. So we're glad of that. So I do want to talk about our fleet of buses. And we have 183 buses. Every year, we purchase between 12 and 15, as some of you know. So our buses this year, or recently, started coming standard with electronic stability control. And those buses have sensors that detect when a bus may not be stable, of course, when they can detect, the sensors can detect when the bus is losing control. So if the, but if the driver's making a wide turn or some, there's ice or there's something that causes the bus to become unstable, then the electronic stability control system kicks in and intervenes to assist the driver in slowing the bus down and regaining that stability. So it's, it acts with, as a retarder in some sense and applies the vehicle brakes as well as it dethrotters the engine so that there's, it no longer accelerates. So there's also collision mitigation technology, and we're looking at that for the future. I mean, all of our cars have, many cars, many of the new cars have the collision mitigation technology. It's fairly new on our buses and it's going to become standard in the future. So our new buses, we actually have a bus that's coming to us soon, one of our Lyft buses, which actually I don't want to keep mentioning Kevin, but it's actually Kevin's bus that's being delivered to us soon that may have that collision mitigation technology. And so of course, that is also designed to reduce the speed of the bus if it becomes close to a bus in front, a vehicle in front of it. So anything that is metallic that's within 500 feet of the bus will cause the bus to slow down. So also, what we don't talk a lot about is compartmentalization. But I want to mention compartmentalization. That's been the way that buses have been designed for years. We don't have seat belts on our bus, but we do have compartmentalization. And the school bus is one of the safest, is the safest vehicle on the road. So compartmentalization basically is the way that this, it involves the way the buses, the seats are placed on the bus. They're placed in close proximity. The seat backs will absorb impact. They're made, there's foam inside of the seat. So if there was a student to slide forward, if the driver made a sudden stop, then that seat back can absorb that impact. So that's how, when students are sitting properly, back to the back, seat to the seat, then that's how that compartmentalization works. And it's worked for years for our students. In some cases where students can't sit properly in the bus, we have specialized restraint systems on our buses or that we can install on our buses. And generally, for students that may have special needs and they may need some assistive types of equipment such as safety vests, some people call them safety harnesses, and those are basically straps that we can put the students in and strap them to the bus, similar to what the straps that are in car seats. And also a specialized restraint system that we have and we've recently used. And also a specialized restraint system that we have and we've recently used. We have car seats in a couple of our buses this year. And those, the students that may not have a certain weight or height, then they're using the car seats to keep them safely in the bus. We also have wheelchair securment systems and also wheelchair lifts on our buses.
Just a, sorry, a quick question on the compartmentalization. So you mentioned that if, if people are sitting, you know, properly in the seats, that it'll absorb the impact. Knowing kids and how they don't always do exactly what we would like them to do, what's the sort of margin of error that we've got there? Like, you know, they may not be sitting fully back and like this. Maybe they're sitting to the side. Are we still getting those same benefits even if they're not perfectly positioned?
They are. Students will, of course, sometimes turn to the side and, you know, even if they turn to the side and their shoulder hits the seat, it's still absorbing any type of impact.
So as we're thinking about some of these things with, you know, there's a big debate now going on with obviously the tragic accident that occurred. And as we're thinking about the relative safety of this versus what other things may exist, you have seat belts in every seat and all of those sorts of things. Can you talk a little bit about how that might change what the school bus experience is if you were to go to a model where, you know, every seat has a seat belt? You know, how, how it might affect volume, how it might affect, you know, safety, those sorts of things?
So it would affect the capacity of the bus. We would, currently our elementary students are, they can, there's thirty-nine inches in a seat. So if we reduce the seating capacity, we would only have maybe two students in a seat where elementary, we can have three. So I think the seat belts also, there are different things that can happen on a school bus. Of course, there could be an accident on a school bus. And sometimes the seat belts, the drivers are trained to evacuate students. Seat belts may slow that evacuation process down. So, and there's also the student management concerns that we would have with the seat belts as far as enforcement, whether or not that is, if they have to definitely all wear them, where of course we know that students don't always wear them. And who's going to enforce that? But of course, it comes to the driver and they're already managing, doing the student management, so they would need to add that as well. So some of the other enhancements that we have on the bus as far as if there is an accident, we do have the evacuation, we teach evacuation drills. And the bus is equipped with two roof hatches and some, the rear door and two windows on the side that drivers, students, if there was an accident and they needed to evacuate, they would twist, turn the red handle and the, and the window swings out. Same with the back door, same with the roof hatches that you turn a red handle and pushes out. So there are already safety, safety devices on the bus to keep the students safe. And we've had a very good track record nationally in school bus safety. So, and then we also have GPS units on all of our buses. So we're able to track our buses and this allows us to compare actual versus the planned routes. If we need to make adjustments and change the route, we're able to see that based on GPS. And we can look at historically of what's stored in our GPS to be able to see what we need to do if there are changes that need to be made. We also, as I mentioned, we have two-way radios. And the bus is getting better with the lighting. So we have our strobing LED lighting on our stop arms. And then we also have the exterior LED lighting. And we also have cameras and it records video. So we have a lot of enhancements on our buses that we're pretty pleased with and with the new technology that's coming. And especially if it's coming standard, then that will also give us a safer bus.
Hey Lori, can you talk about the evacuation drills that you do? Because you just talked about the safety and obviously some of the things are in the buses, but you do those as well every year.
So in the first week of October, that's our bus safety week. And that's where we start, wait, maybe it's the third week. It's in October, our first week we do our counts. But we do have bus safety week where we teach our students how to evacuate a bus using the front door, of course, the, the back door. And the, and then they split and they use the front and back door. Students also learn that where the exits are that they can, or the hatches, the emergency equipment. We also encourage students to practice using the radio. If a driver were to become incapacitated, then students would be able to call in to dispatch and just say, hey, student testing the radio, whatever we want them, whatever the driver tells them to say. And then we know that's a student just practicing. So we are also looking at making some students, how, I think there used to be safety patrols years ago, I guess, when students would cross the street. And I think they still have safety. Yeah, so on the bus, there will be certain students identified, maybe fifth graders for the elementary, eighth graders for middle school and tenth graders or whoever's riding the high school bus because some of the eleventh and twelfth graders drive. So to manage help to be that safety person to assist if there were to be an emergency. So as we develop our routes, we take into account, of course, our new boundaries. And of course, since we're growing, that's something that we're going to experience again soon with redistricting. So those new boundaries, we have to put those, of course, in our routing map so that we can make sure that we are transporting students in the, in the right boundaries to the right schools. And then we also have our non-transportation zones that actually, when we add the non-transportation zones, that helps us to design a better route to be more efficient. And actually, this year, because of our non-transportation zones and some other efficiencies that we've built into our system, our routes have decreased. We had one hundred and fifty-nine routes and we have one hundred and fifty-four routes, which is something that is not really, it's, well, it's something that we're proud of because while we're growing in the school district, we're always watching to see where we can become efficient and ensure that we are compliant with the law, that we're not overdoing things and providing service that we shouldn't. But just making sure that we are efficient and, and meeting, still meeting the needs of our students. So we also, of course, get information from our new student welcome center, which that's very important because we have a number of students enrolling throughout the year. Our transportation registration that we implemented a few years ago really helps us because we're trying to get parents to go ahead and tell us if they're going to use the bus, let us know if they're not riding the bus so that we don't have more buses out there than, than we need. So that's still a work in progress. We have some students that are waiting maybe for latchkey or daycare. So we don't, we still have bus routes for them. So we want to just make sure that we try to capture that. So we're just looking at new ways to capture that information. So we'll probably change our process a little bit in the future where maybe they can answer the question through Power School before they leave in June to let us know if they rode the bus this year, are they going to ride the bus next year? And then that will help us also to ensure that our, we don't have too many buses out there. Pupil Services, we have a great partnership with Pupil Services. We meet in the summer and then we talk regularly because we do have, we, we know that we have a great program here in the district for special education. So that, that population is growing. And so our bus service is, we want to make sure that we're designing our bus service to meet the needs of every student. And we've, we've done that. So sometimes that, they need that bus right away. And so we're looking to get those routes changed and supporting our students. We also have students or parents that move into the district who already have their students enrolled in a non-public school. So we have to get those requests in and they're looking for buses. As you know, because it's on the board agenda tonight, some students, their transportation is impractical. It's just not feasible for us to provide. So we're not always able to do that. But when we are, we go ahead and we route those students. And otherwise, we look to see what we can do and if not, we declare them impractical. And I'll talk a little bit more about declaring students impractical. Power School, we get information from Power School as well. We incorporate our bus numbers so that we look at which buses are available versus our spare buses. And also after that, we bring our drivers in. They get to bid on those routes based on the schools, the number of students, the hours of pay. And then after they bid those routes and look over the route directions, then they're practicing their routes. So we practice our routes, the routes, two days before school. So, and then as students enroll, of course, we still have to make adjustments. Our recruitment. So this was big this year. And of course, we know nationally there's a driver shortage. We're trying to keep up. And so while we're doing that, we had a great outing. This was in June. We had a test drive the bus day. And you can see there, somebody there in the picture in the bottom right was one of our participants, Mr. Meyer.
Still working on his CDL.
So this was in a parking lot, so he was safe driving around to drive a certain route over at,
Ish.
At Orange Middle School. So we had eighteen people that responded that day that we were able to interview in that two, three-hour time period. And most of them are still here in training. Some of them have already become licensed, so that day was very successful. We have other recruitment efforts. We had a radio ad, I don't know if anybody heard it, but we did have, we were featured on a radio just to let people know that we were looking for drivers. We also parked buses in different places such as Life Point Church, the Ninja Car Wash. We, and also Liberty High School, Orange High, Orange High School as well, Orange Middle School. So anywhere we can strategically place our buses, we'll do that. And we'll have rolling interviews. I think it was February, well, maybe it's March, that we had a rolling type of interview where we interviewed applicants on the bus, actually. So we parked along Gemini Parkway in front of a restaurant and, a Saturday morning. And we did attract a number of people, I can't remember right now, I think maybe ten or eleven people at that time. So we want to continue doing things like that. We are also going to participate in the Delaware County Fair. So we'll have a table there where we're recruiting drivers. And hopefully the Delaware City schools don't take our signs or anything like that when we're trying to recruit up there in, in that area, so. And also for the first time, we had a movie theater ad. So when they're advertising popcorn and pop and all of that, there's also, Olentangy's looking for drivers. So we were going to go and cheer during that time and pass things out, but we'll do that next time. But, so we're excited about that. And then we're going to have a table ad on one of the tables at a local restaurant in Powell where it will invite people to apply for positions. So we're excited about that. We think that we're doing some cutting edge and some creative things. And we continue to hire throughout the year. And we participate in all the job fairs. And I think the last job fair, we may have had four people, five people maybe. So that, that's a good thing. So the results of those efforts. So right now, we still have about twelve people that they're in the process of obtaining their driving permit. Of course, you need a driving permit, a CDL driving permit to get behind the wheel and go on to the street, not the parking lot. And then some of them are still getting their records. And then we have seven people who are actively training, which means they should complete that training fairly quickly because they're already in the process. We may already have another person, we have a couple of people testing. So once they test and get their CDL, then they're able to start driving students. So we have, as I mentioned, a hundred and fifty-four routes. So we currently have one hundred and forty-nine drivers. So we're looking for, to, to give us, I guess, a little bit more of a comfort level, we have, we have a need for ten more people, actually. However, we can hire up to a hundred and sixty-eight. Or I think because we've, actually, we add two to three positions every year, but we also reduce our routes or we keep our routes the same. So we haven't really hired up to where we can. But we have room that we can, we can accept any new person up to a hundred and sixty-eight or maybe it's one seventy right now. So we'll, if we get to that number, then we will be almost comfortable because transportation, of course, it's, it's moving, it's fluid, so things, things take place. But we also have eleven, eleven substitute drivers that help us out on a daily basis. We are proud that we have some memberships and partnerships with some other organizations. These organizations help us to stay on the forefront of what's happening in transportation, any new laws like our house bills that we're going to talk about. Ohio, the Ohio Association of Pupil Transportation helps, they help us with that as all, as, as well as the Ohio School Boards Association. They keep us up to date with whatever's new going on in transportation. Our National Association of Pupil Transportation, we attend those conferences too, especially when they're local, which it is in Ohio this year in November. And we'll be attending that conference. The Ohio Operation Lifesaver, we have a lot of trains that come through our area. And we can call on them at any time to provide our drivers with, with training. So now the house bills that impact transportation. Last year, House Bill one-ten took effect. And that changed some things for us in declaring students their transportation as impractical. And when we declare, when the board declares the students impractical, then afterwards, we offer them a payment in lieu of transportation. So there are some factors that go into declaring them impractical. And those are the, there's, there are five factors. And so we look at time and distance, the ones that pretty much apply to us, the time and distance. Students who attend some non-public schools, the non-public schools are outside of our district and they may take, if you trans, if we give bus stops to all of the students, it does make for a lengthy ride. And that's then all we're doing with that bus, one run, and that's to the non-public school. So that becomes too costly, which is one of the factors as well. Currently, we use our buses three times, high school, middle school, elementary. So when there's a non-public, if the non-public, if we're able to add another school run, like the high school bus, we can do high school and then do the non-public school, then that will work for us. But we've run into cases where we could only, because of the time, only transport the non-public students. And sometimes there may be seven, only seven non-public students going outside of the district. But they don't all live in a boundary, like our, like Olentangy students, they live in a certain boundary. But non-public students can live anywhere in the district and they still go to a school that's outside of the district. That's when it becomes impractical for us.
So the, the money part of this is, the logic is, we're getting paid from this, we're getting, we're transporting kids. And if it's not, then the families get the money, get, get a certain amount, right? And that, that went up this year?
So actually, in house bill, when this bill was implemented, before it was implemented, I'll say it was two hundred and fifty dollars per student that we paid. We typically only budgeted about sixty, sixty-five thousand. But when this changed, it doubled. And it went from two fifty to five thirty-eight and fifty-five cents. And this last year, it's increased again to five ninety-six. So it's based on the average cost to transport a student in Ohio. So it's half, it's fifty percent of that, which, that's the, the amount that was modified there. And the bullet three modifies the minimum. So the minimum went from two hundred and fifty to five thirty-eight fifty-five that, last year. So it also, if there, if we don't provide the transportation and then we don't pass, board approve, or if we fail to meet any of those, then there is a penalty and the maximum then would be twenty-five hundred dollars. So there's a deadline also that was set that we have to declare, the board has to declare students' transportation as impractical thirty days before the first day of school. So we submit that information to you in July so that we are in compliance. And so also what changed is, and it is showing there in bullet number two, the deadline, if somebody comes to us, two, the deadline, if somebody comes to us, they enroll in after school starts. So, we only have 14 days then to declare them, their transportation is impractical. So, that's why we've been submitting those so frequently where before, we would do it two or three times a year. But now, it's almost every meeting, depending on if somebody has come to us. So, we have 14 days to ensure that we're in compliance to declare them impractical. And the last house bill is also, it requires us to declare everybody, that everybody's transportation as impractical every other year, at least every other year. We started doing it every year, though, a couple of years ago, just anticipating that that would come. So, we, we have no trouble meeting any of these. So, we have not, not come close to not being compliant with this.
Just, just out of curiosity, is that 14 days for us as the board to do that? Or is it just the district to notify? Because, I mean, there are times where we don't have board meetings every 14 days. So, what happens in those instances?
So, it's after they request transportation. We'll give them a preliminary letter that says that, you know, look, it appears that your student's transportation is impractical. And we can also, the superintendent can also declare them as impractical as well. But we've, I guess, been able to get that to you before the board meeting because we haven't had a problem with that. So, every two weeks, pretty much, you're declaring somebody impractical if they've come to us.
Right.
Yeah. Except for July, that's 30 days. And lastly, we have some projects that we're going to implement, that we're in the process. We have a routing program upgrade. This will allow us to become even more efficient with our routes. The current system that we have has some limitations. And this one will allow us, it's user-friendly, it will allow us to be able to do our routing faster. So, even next year, we could probably get information to our power school even faster than we did this year. So, students can look at their transportation. Instead of right now, we have to get that information in maybe two weeks before in order for it to be ready for students to take a look at it a week before school. We have a new fuel system coming, this new software and equipment. Each bus will have sensors as they pull up to the pumps. Then there are readers that will, they have sensors that the readers will detect the mileage, the bus number, the amount of fuel that is needed in the bus. So, currently, drivers have to enter all that information. But once the sensors are installed, then the sensors will already detect that information and the mileage, if I didn't say mileage. And we also have some new cameras coming for our vans. Our vans do not have the same equipment that our buses have. This will allow us to have video footage if we need it for student management while they're on, on field trips or for anything for, to make the bus, the van safe, as safe as our buses. And we're going to put a bid in to host our regional and state school bus rodeo as we did years ago. And this will build camaraderie with our drivers. It helps sharpen their, their driving skills. And it showcases Olentangie and our schools as we invite all the other districts to Olentangie. So, we're happy about that. Hopefully, we get that. It's been at Westerville for the last couple of years, but we haven't tried to have it here. But now, we're going to do that. And lastly, we're always making moves in this year with the help of human resources. We did hire a number of people and we're changing our staff. I now have an assistant director, which is great. And maybe at the next presentation, he'll join, join with us and be able to present as well. So, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done. Thank you. I will now have the superintendent's report, Mr. Meyer.
All right. Good evening, good evening. Karen left and Sharon left, but I did, I did want to thank Karen for her work that she does for the district through the redistricting process. Because there's a lot of science, science to it, but also a lot of art to it, like Mr. Wright mentioned. And for sure, want to thank our community members who serve on that committee because they spend a lot of time really working to identify where we assign students. So, Nico, thank you, because I know you're a part new to that committee and he's here tonight. So, thank you. First up, this is really cool. So, Dr. Fede and I got to be mystery readers, guest readers in Mrs., Ms. McCag's third grade class. Now, Ms. McCag is a brand-new teacher this year at Johnny K. Warner's, and she's an Orange graduate. So, if you guys want a good morning, you're, you're, let me know and let's go to an elementary school in a kindergarten, first, second, or third grade class. These kids are really, really curious. So, a lot of.
The Q and A sessions are.
Yes. It was a lot of fun. So, definitely had a great experience there, reading to a third grade class. Just want to highlight, this is the first of four. We held August 25th of OEF, who recognizes Teacher and Employee of the Year awardees. So, we actually will do the second one this Friday at Olentangie High School when Orange plays at Olentangie High School. So, it, it's a great way for OEF to honor and recognize our teachers and employees of the year in front of very, very big crowds. Learning and organizational development, just want to highlight the curriculum and pupil services team for hosting a specialist retreat. And again, a lot of things that we do are so intentional in the district. So, we've talked a lot about our achievement. And, and I say it all the time, it just doesn't happen by accident. Because there's a lot of intentionality around our alignment in the district. And this, this is just another example of bringing all of our specialists. Of course, we have 27 buildings. Bring them together as far as, in order to collaborate as far as what that alignment looks like in our buildings and across the district. Also, I think a lot of you may have attended Curriculum Nights. So, we do that every year. It's an opportunity for our teachers to meet with parents, to go over what's covered in class, cadence of the school year, and for sure, how to best communicate with teachers in our schools. We have a very, very involved community, which is great. And, and we always want to partner with our parents. So, this is always well-attended every year as far as our curriculum nights. And teachers do a really, really good job of presenting that material. Also, congratulations. And we reported out and there was a news article, I believe, on this. But congratulations to our four high schools. Berlin has now joined the party. They've been in existence long enough to qualify. So, in the state, ranked Olentangie, Liberty ninth, Olentangie High School 13th, Berlin 21st, and Orange High School 22nd. But I want to put that into perspective because in perspective, Liberty and Olentangie High School in the top 1% of the state. And I think in this U.S. News World Report, I believe it's 749 schools, high schools, yep, 749 high schools. And then, Berlin and Orange in the top 2% of the state. And then, when you break it down into central Ohio, 149 schools in central Ohio. So, all four of our high schools in the top seven in central Ohio. And there's some really, really good schools in central Ohio. And obviously, we have really, really good schools here. I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention all of our elementary schools and middle schools and the staff and administrators within those schools. Because they do such a good job of preparing our kids for the next grade, the next level. And then, obviously, high school and then our high schools do a great job of preparing our students for life after high school. So, want to really congratulate the whole district for this recognition. Also, want to, this week, we are conducting a community survey. And it's a telephone, a telephone survey. So, members of the board that have been on the board and new board members, we do this every three to four years. So, we collect stakeholder satisfaction areas related to educational quality, facilities, future direction, and fiscal management. And it is aligned to one of our benchmarks in our district, CIP Benchmark Eight, High Community Engagement and Stakeholder Satisfaction. So, we will get a look at those preliminary results next week and then plan to bring that data to the board at a future board meeting. This, I'm going to invite Jeanette Kenny up here because our school report card by law is supposed to be released next week by September 15th. So, I want to make sure that Jeanette's going to give you a little snapshot of what to expect when those come out. Because I didn't want you guys to see it for the first time when it comes out. And then, she's going to come back and give a more in-depth presentation at the next board meeting of the actual report card and what everything means. So, this is just going to be a real quick snapshot of what we expect.
Good evening. So, as Mr. Meyer said, the state report card will be released by September 15th. We haven't been given a specific day or time yet, but we expect that it probably will be on that date. This year, we will see the five-star ratings once again. Last year was the first year that we saw kind of the new revised report card. It'll look very similar this year with those five rated components. So, it will be rated on achievement, progress, or value added, or growth, gap closing, the early literacy measure, and graduation, along with some other just reported-only data. The new thing for this year is that we will receive an overall rating. So, last year, we had the five rated components, but they didn't give the districts an overall rating. We will see that this year. So, I am able to pull some kind of preliminary data from the secure data center within ODE's kind of data portal that we're allowed to pull. So, this is what we are anticipating seeing when this is released next week. So, you can see in achievement, gap closing, early literacy, and graduation, we're expecting to be five stars again, which is significantly exceeding the state expectations in those areas. You can see for progress, we are anticipating, this was just released on Tuesday, that we will see a four-star rating in this area this year. That four-star is still significantly, statistically significant that we are exceeding the state's growth expectation. And then, our overall rating, we are anticipating to be a five-star overall district. Are there any questions at this time?
Remind us what progress is.
Progress is growth data. So, that is a comparative measure. It's looking at how our kids perform from one year to the next compared to how other students across the state are performing one year to the next. And in this measure, four and five stars are both that there's significant evidence that we've exceeded the growth expectation from the state. To get to a five star, it's just at a larger magnitude.
So, once you have more information, you'll be able to break it down and say, this is what drives four, this is what drives five. And, and you can also look at this by school, right?
Yeah. So, when the report cards are released next week, we'll be able to see all of this district-level data down to the school-level data as well.
And for growth purposes, because we're always getting better, you can actually go down to the teacher level for coaching and getting better and, and all that sort of stuff.
So, typically, that's not released until about November, but there is teacher-level value added for teachers' grades four through eight and then certain high school subject as well. So, yes.
And that's EVA's?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Okay. So, just to highlight a few action items tonight, action items are actually kind of light tonight, but we'll have some certified and classified action items. We do have four seniors for early graduation to approve tonight. And these seniors have met the graduation requirements and have decided to graduate early. And then, as Ms. Carter Evans mentioned, we do have some additional students to declare impractical for transportation. And then, as far as moving forward, again, just want to remind all of you and anybody who's watching, Drive a Bus Hiring Event will be Saturday, September 16th at Orange Middle School from 8:00 to 11:00. We will have our first Professional Development Day, Monday, September 18th. Multilingual Family Night, Wednesday, September 20th, 6:00 to 8:00 at Oak Creek Elementary. And looking forward to providing that. Again, I think I mentioned in our district now, we're over 80 languages in the district and over 4,000 multilingual families in the district. So, looking forward to that. Berlin High School Alumni Gathering. So, Berlin High School has alumni, a couple graduating classes. So, that's something that I think we started last year, a couple of years ago, doing that at all the high schools. So, that will be September 22nd. And then, we will be back here on September 21st at 6:30 PM. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Meyer? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Mr. Jenkins, you have a treasure report.
I have a very light agenda this evening.
Good.
So, I'm going to stay right here.
You're not awake?
I'm a bit on the insalubrious side. Minutes from August 24th and second reading of the Revised Booster and Support Organization Manual. That's all I have.
Terrific. Do we have any public participation?
We do not.
There's no button. All right. So, we'll go into the action items. So, Mr. Jenkins, will you present your treasure action items?
Yeah. So, item A is the minutes from August 24th. And item B would be the second read of the Revised Booster Manual. And if there's any questions?
Could I have a motion, please? So moved. In a second?
Second.
Any discussion on treasure action items? All right. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Meyer, will you present the superintendent action items?
Yes. I would like to present superintendent action items A through D for approval, please.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on superintendent action items? All right. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
All right. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It wants. Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody.